Good evening and welcome to this live citywide telephone town hall. I'm San Antonio City Manager Eric Walsh. We're holding this live town hall meeting to discuss next year's proposed budget for FY23. Tonight, I'm joined by Deputy City Manager Maria Villa Gomez, Office of Management and Budget Director Justina Tate, and many city department heads who are here to help answer your questions tonight. The city budget covers a lot of items from your day-to-day lives like property tax relief, police and fire services, safe streets and sidewalks, public health, parks, libraries, and much more. I'm excited to hear from you this evening. Let me turn it over to Laura Mays to tell you how you can submit your questions tonight.
Good evening, San Antonio. Thank you so much for joining us for this live telephone town hall meeting. If you're getting a phone call from us now, we are so happy you're joining us. This is a virtual town hall meeting where you can speak directly to our city manager, Eric Walsh, as well as our deputy city manager, Maria Villa Gomez, and many department heads and leaders from things like the library, parks and rec, public works, animal care services, and so many more. We'll have time for questions, and please be patient with us as we dial out to thousands of your neighbors this evening. We'll be taking your questions and comments from you live during this telephone town hall meeting, and it's really easy to participate. If you'd like to join the conversation, just press zero on your keypad, and you can ask a question, leave a comment, or share your concern with us. Again, just press zero on your keypad on your phone, and you can ask your question live right here on the air. If you'd rather not speak live during the call, that's totally okay, too. You can still press zero and speak to an operator and still provide them your question, and I'd read that over the air for you. We're calling thousands of our neighbors this evening, so please be patient if you're hearing this message again. Your input is extremely important to us, and it's going to help city leaders ensure that we continue providing both critical services to our residents while prioritizing areas of need. I also want to share with you that we're streaming this meeting live on Facebook. So if you're watching on Facebook, I hope you'll share your questions and comments with us right here on the comment feed, and we'll take those questions live over the air as well. This telephone meeting is also simulcasting in Spanish, so if you'd like to listen to this event in Spanish, para español, puedes llamar 888-400-9342. Again, if you'd rather listen to this event in Spanish, para español, marque 888-400-9342. So again, you're live on the air with City Manager Eric Walsh, Deputy City Manager Maria Villa Gomez, and many of our city staff to answer your questions about the city budget. You're probably hearing this message again if you're on the line, and we're glad you can join us. This is a call that's going out to thousands of our neighbors so we can try to get as many people to participate as possible in our city budget. This is one of the most important decisions our council will make each year, so your input is very valuable to us. If at any point you have a question for our city manager or any of the city staff on the line, just press zero, and we'll take your question or comment live over the air. If you're watching on Facebook, you can also just type in your comment right there on the feed, and we'll read those live on the air as well. All right, and so now let me turn it over to our city manager, Eric Walsh, to tell you a little bit about what's inside the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. Eric?
Thanks, Laura. So good evening, everyone, again. My name is Eric Walsh. I'm the City Manager of San Antonio, and I want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to join us tonight for this budget conversation. Tonight's conversation is an interactive one, so if any point you've got a question or comment, please press zero on your keypad. As Laura mentioned, we have a whole host of other members of the city team on here tonight, representing departments such as the Police Department, the Fire Department, Parks, Human Services, our Neighborhood and Housing Services budget, the Library Department, Metro Health, Animal Care, Public Works, and Code Enforcement. As a reminder, if you'd like to join the conversation tonight with your question, comment, or concern, please press zero on the keypad. And before we take your questions and hear from you, let me talk a little bit about the highlights in next year's proposed budget. So number one, the San Antonio Fiscal Year 23 Proposed Budget invests in the continued economic recovery of our community, first and foremost, by providing money back to our residents, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. But we're providing in this proposed budget an additional $22.5 million in property tax relief and $50 million in proposed credits to set all CPS energy customers. Secondly, the city's proposed budget invests in our over 7,500 civilian employees, really primarily to make sure that we are competing in the market. We want to retain and recruit the best. And when you look at all the different things the city does, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, those positions are critical to us. We'll be making a number of adjustments to how we pay or how much we pay our civilians, make sure that we are competitive in the market, and that's included in our work plan for next year. Thirdly, the city is proposing to make our greatest investments ever in infrastructure, primarily through the implementation of the $1.2 billion bond program that voters approved in May. It's the largest bond program that we've ever undertaken, but we'll also be doing a significant amount of work as we work to expand the airport over the next several years. Also, we'll be doing work at the Convention Center and the Alamo Dome and a whole host of other municipal facilities that need work and renovations and improvement. You know, lastly, I'd say that we're continuing our commitment to make sure that San Antonio is a more resilient community through our investments in housing affordability, parks and recreation, libraries, public health, police and fire, which are critical to the community, and all identified as priorities by both the residents through our community survey and the council. So just a little, just a couple of budget facts. Our overall proposed budget is $3.4 billion, and our general fund budget makes up $1.5 billion of that total. Our capital infrastructure plan for next year is $641 million. And what I call our restricted funds budget, which are our businesses that are self-sufficient with their own revenue sources, like the airport, our solid waste department, our hotel occupancy tax fund, and all the federal and state grants we receive, that budget next year is proposed to be $1.2 billion. Our total workforce going into fiscal year 23 is a little over 13,300 employees. And the budget does include a significant amount of federal dollars we've received as a result of COVID. Specifically, there's a little over $156 million in ARPA funds that are programmed in next year's budget. So let me dial back a little bit and talk about property tax relief. I mentioned that earlier. That was one of the top priorities of the council as they met in April at their goal-setting session. It was also the number-one priority of the citizens of the survey that we conducted earlier this summer. In June, the mayor and the council approved three different things in terms of property tax. They increased the city's homestead exemption from 0.1% of the taxable value of your home to 10%. They also increased the over-65 exemption from $65,000 to $85,000, and they increased the disabled persons exemption from $12,500 to $85,000. Those actions were taken by the council in June, and under state law, as long as those actions are taken before July 1, we can begin to immediately program them into the next fiscal year, which we've done. Those three items that the council took action on in June are resulting in $22.5 million in property tax savings to our residents. In addition, our property tax rate, primarily driven by the increased values, our property tax rate is calculated to decrease by 1.67 cents from $55.827 per $100 to $54.161. You know, the last time the city reduced its tax rate was in 2016. All told, these adjustments are included in the proposed budget and recognizing the increased values that the community and homeowners and property owners are experiencing. As a reminder, the city makes up 20% of your total tax bill. And so this was, again, as I mentioned, this was a top priority of the council, and we've included in the proposed budget. The second area where we're proposing to push money back out to the customers of CPS and residents of San Antonio and beyond, to be honest with you, is that I'm recommending that we credit $50 million to all customers of CPS. This recommendation is based on the fact that what the city's experienced over the last couple of months has been extraordinarily high revenue that we've received. San Antonio, the city of San Antonio, owns CPS and receives a portion of all bills that are paid to them, 14%. That's an investment that the city made in CPS 70-some-one years ago when they purchased CPS. If CPS was a private company, they would be paying the city property taxes. So this return to the owner of CPS, the city, is in lieu of property taxes. But we recite, but over the last couple of months, given the higher natural gas prices, primarily driven by other geopolitical issues happening in other parts of the world, as well as the extreme heat we've all encountered over the last couple of months this summer, our revenue projections for this fiscal year is that we will be $75 million over in revenue this fiscal year from CPS. So this recommendation takes into account the fact that CPS ratepayers have seen extraordinarily high bills the last couple of months. And as I mentioned a second ago, we've seen extraordinarily high revenue. This will not reduce or eliminate anybody's back due charges that they owe CPS. It won't pay your whole utility bill, but it is the city, as the owner of CPS, recognizing the extraordinary position that we've all found ourselves in the last couple of months. The majority of this money would go to residential customers, and $45 million of the $50 million would be fairly distributed in the same way the money was collected by the city. That's based on the July energy usage of all customers, regardless of where you live, regardless if you're a small business or a homeowner, or you live in an apartment. And the average residential customer had an electrical bill of $230 in the month of July. That average customer would receive a $31 credit in their October bill under this proposal. And the remaining $5 million would be contributed to a fund that CPS has that provides utility payment relief and support to those individuals that are eligible for that type of additional help. You have to be eligible, but making sure that that is an opportunity for some folks in our community to continue that may need help, that $5 million would be dedicated towards that additional effort. So that is an issue that the council is still discussing, and is likely to have another work session here over the next couple of weeks, so stay tuned. This is very unusual for us, and we will, the council will be taking action here in the next couple of weeks. So Laura, let me pass it back over to you for kind of a reminder for everybody.
Thank you, Eric. A lot of great information there for our residents. If you're interested in learning more about the proposed budget, you can go to sanantonio.gov/budget or keep tuning into this town hall meeting. If you're just joining us, this is a live telephone town hall meeting with the city of San Antonio. We're joined by our city manager, Eric Walsh, our deputy city manager, Maria Villa Gomez, and several of our leaders from various departments like police, libraries, solid waste, the Office of Management and Budget, human services, animal care, parks, code enforcement, neighborhood and housing services, public works, and so many more. There's a lot of great information on for you. If you have a question for us, it's very easy to participate. Just press zero on your keypad, and we will take your question live on the air. If you're watching on Facebook, you can also just leave your comment, and we will get to your questions as well. Eric, why don't you tell us a little bit about the infrastructure plans in this year's proposed budget?
Yeah, absolutely. Another high priority of both the council and the citizens that participated in the survey. Next year, and as I mentioned earlier, not just next year, over the next couple of years, we'll be making our greatest investments ever in infrastructure and major city facilities here in San Antonio. Streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, the airport, the bond program I mentioned earlier. In next year's proposed budget, the city will begin the first-year implementation of that 2022 bond program. $160 million is included in next year's budget to begin that implementation. Now, over the five, next five years, we will be working to, on all 183 projects that the voters approved in May. And simply laying this out, the first one or two years, the first two years of the bond program are really going to be focused on the design of those projects. And years three, four, and five are our construction-heavy years. In terms of infrastructure maintenance, the proposed budget includes $154 million in infrastructure maintenance, and that includes $116 million in street maintenance, $21 million in sidewalks and new sidewalks, $3 million in new traffic signals, and $2 million in alley maintenance. This infrastructure maintenance proposal for FY23 is increased. It's a little bit more than $13 million more than we had this year, and there's a lot more to cover in the proposed budget. And I look forward to continuing to hear any questions you might have this evening.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Eric. Again, a lot to learn about this year's proposed budget. You can learn more about it and see those highlights at sanantonio.gov/budget. Next up, we'd like to introduce Deputy City Manager Maria Villa Gomez, who's going to talk a little bit about some other important city services that are featured in the proposed budget. Maria, go ahead.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. So I want to share with you a little bit more about the proposed budget for fiscal year 2023, specifically on public safety, which was also one of the top five priorities from our community, parks and recreation, our metro health department, and also housing affordability. So let me start with police. The proposed budget is recommending that we add 78 new police officers. San Antonio, like any other cities across the country, have experienced an increase in crime. So Chief McManus is working with UTSA to develop a crime strategy to address violent crime here in our community. And this plan is scheduled to be completed later in the fall. So to be able to implement strategies that are going to be recommended within that plan, 50 of the 78 officers are recommended to be able to address violent crime in our community. These 50 officers that I'm describing are possible due to a grant that we have applied with the Department of Justice, and we anticipate to know if we get this grant in September. In addition to that, as part of the 2017 program, the voters approve a new police station in North St. Mary's. So we're adding 28 positions to be able to staff and provide supervisors to that location that is scheduled to be open in January of 2024. So I'm going to move now to our fire department, which was also one of the priorities of our community. And the fire department has a strategic plan in which they lay out the resources that are needed to maintain the services that they provide to our community. So in 2023, the budget recommends the addition of what we call a ladder company with 15 new firefighters to address calls across our city. Also, we are opening a fire station that was approved in the 2017 bond program, Fire Station 24, which is located between the borders of District 2 and District 10. And we're adding an emergency response team to this substation. So those are the couple of the improvements we're doing. In addition to that, in the capital budget, one of the priorities that we have heard from the community when we were working on the 2022 bond program was the replacement of some of our fire stations. So the capital budget includes the replacement of one of our fire stations in the southeast of our city and also the conversion of two temporary fire stations into permanent fire stations. So that's what we're doing in the fire department. Parks and Recreation was also one of the top five priorities of our community. So the budget invests close to $20 million in parks and recreation improvements to several of our facilities across the city, renovations such as playgrounds and retaining parking lots. So we are excited to be able to provide these improvements across the city. Moving on to public health, our Metro Health Department implemented last year, or actually this year, a five-year plan that is called SA Forward. So the budget invests $5.8 million to continue some of the programs that we started using some federal grants during the COVID-19 pandemic, and we are making those investments permanent in our general fund. So that is roughly about $3.8 million. And we're also establishing a partnership between the city and UTSA to establish a school of public health. There's $2 million allocated in the budget to be able to do that. And finally, the last piece that I want to share with you is what we're doing in terms of housing affordability. We know that this is critical in our community, so the budget continues to focus on affordable housing. And we actually have $136 million included in the fiscal year 2023 budget that will result in 2,500 new housing units in our community, so we're excited about that. Affordable housing is a priority of the council. So the five-year investment that we're planning to begin in fiscal year 2023, in conjunction with what was approved in the 2022 bond program, is $316 million. So this will help those individuals in our community with affordable housing needs. So those are the highlights that I want to share with you, and I'm going to turn it over to Laura so we can start getting some questions from the audience. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Eric and Maria. As y'all can imagine, there is a lot more in this proposed budget, but let's get to your questions. I know many callers are on the line now, ready to ask their questions. And we're going to start out with Lori. This is a question for Chief McManus, and Lori, you're live on the line. Go ahead. Lori, do we have you on the phone?
Yes.
Go ahead, Lori.
Okay. My name is Lori Rocha. I just wanted, I heard about that there's going to be something to hire more police officers, which I think that's awesome. I just wanted to know if that means that there will be more police promoted or however that works to the homicide department, because I feel they need more cold case detectives. My son was murdered November 26, 2016, in a road rage on Hevner Road. He was the passenger. And I'm, you know, concerned about the unsolved homicides here in San Antonio.
Chief, you're on mute. The joys of Zoom, everyone. Go ahead, chief.
Lori, thank you for that question, and I will start out by saying that I'm very, very sorry that that happened to your son. And I hope you never give up hope that we'll solve that murder. But I will tell you this, that we will add positions throughout the police department as the department grows. But for right now, we will not be adding anyone to the homicide unit. If you like, I'm not sure how recently you've spoken to the detective who's handling your case, but if you like, I can make sure that we give you a call tomorrow, and we go over with you what we have, if you'll just give me your phone number.
And Mary Alice, we are live on the air, so we won't get your phone number here. But if you would, just press zero once again on your keypad, and we'll make sure our operators take that down so that we can connect with you and make sure that we get that assistance for you.
Thank you, Lori.
All right, our next question comes to us from Presley, who's in the downtown area. Presley, this question, I believe, is for Melody Woosley, our Director of Human Services. Go ahead.
Yes, I was curious. I didn't hear anything in the budget to take care of the homeless people downtown, under the bridge, and in the various areas. I had heard that we had sent a couple of busloads to Austin because they're a sanctuary city, and we've got quite a few people coming in over the border. Do we have plans or something in the budget to be able to move these people onward so that they don't burden our city schools and police department?
And so, yes, actually, there is quite a bit in the budget to help the homeless population. We're adding 1.3 million to make permanent our homeless outreach team, as well as another 1.2 million to ensure, or, you know, so the 1.3 million includes homeless outreach and our homeless hotline, which allows people to call and get assistance before they become homeless. We work to divert them from becoming homeless or going to a homeless shelter. Also, people who are homeless, we can help connect them to resources, potentially emergency housing assistance, or, you know, appropriate mental health and shelter services. And so that's a big addition for this program. We are also providing six months of funding to a low-barrier, non-congregate shelter that will allow, you know, those homeless who don't do well in group settings and have serious, serious mental health issues to be housed and receive services. And so, yes, there is quite a bit. We work with a number of partners, we fund partners, and we're in constant contact with them in order to help the situation and move homeless individuals into a better living.
Thank you so much, Melody, and thank you, Presley, for that call. Next up on the line, we've got Deborah from District 4. This is a question for Dale from our library department. Deborah, go ahead.
Hi, I had a question. I'm going to switch it out a little bit because I think this is more important. Travis Park is downtown, and it's right beside the bus station. And we have a lot of people that come off the bus station that don't have a place to stay. And with the fact that our housing places are full right now, if we could bring Wi-Fi to that park, people would be able to, people would be able to reach out to relatives to come pick them up. Is that a possibility to possibly equip Travis Park with Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi like other parks in San Antonio?
Thank you, Deborah. So I'm actually going to pass that question over to Homer Garcia from our Parks and Recreation Department. Homer, maybe you can assist Deborah with that question.
Good evening, Deborah. Homer Garcia, Parks and Recreation Department Director. And Travis Park, we do not have Wi-Fi in that park location. There are various spaces in the downtown area that does. In the proposed budget, there is not funding to add Wi-Fi at Travis Park.
Thank you, Homer. All right, we will go to our next question here. This one comes to us from the east side. Rose, you're on the hill. Rose Hill, you're on the line. My apologies. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask a question tonight. My question is that I know it's great to hear that Eric is giving more money to our sidewalk, streetlights, drains, and all that. If, at the end of the, at the end of the day, when there's extra money that's going to be put back into the, into the, into the main budget, if there's any money that's extra that can be put even more toward the street sidewalks, it'd be greatly appreciated because I think even with the amount of money that's already staying there, it doesn't seem still, doesn't seem like a lot of money. But we hope that maybe, okay, even if there's any leftovers, please put it toward the side streets and sidewalks. Those are mainly very important topics for our seniors, especially broken sidewalks and everything. And the other thing that I want, the second question that I wanted to ask is that the timeline and when these projects are being done, is there one group that's going to be managing all over San Antonio these projects? Or is there going to be different groups? Like, say, you have three teams, and one team is going to handle District 1 through 5 to make sure that those projects are done, and then the other five council districts, I mean, you know, how is that going to work? And will all the projects get done on time?
Thank you, Rose. Great question. Robert from Public Works, why don't you help out Rose with that answer?
Sure. Well, just first to, like to brag a little bit here about this next budget that we have right now. Sure. Well, just first to, like to brag a little bit here about this next budget that we have right now. 154 million is going towards the infrastructure, which is 13 more million than we had last year. So we are always putting more money towards the infrastructure, so happy to share with that. When it comes to developing these projects and delivering the projects, the, they're not specifically towards council districts. They're spread out by programs. So you have bond programs, street programs, sidewalk programs. And each one of those programs have project managers that oversee all those projects. So they are split up, as you were asking, by PMs, but based on the type of work that's being done.
Thank you so much, Robert. And Rose, thank you again for that question. Again, if you'd like to ask a question, we'll take those live on the air, just like your neighbors that you've heard earlier. Just press zero on your keypad and we'll take those questions. Next on the line, we have Hector coming to us from the west side. And this is a question about parks and recreation. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Eric Walsh. I believe that the city, the size of the city we have, we need to do much more for our youth as in building sport complex geared for the size of our youth only, not put the youth in adult complexes. Other cities throughout Texas and other states have beautiful complexes built for the youth, which attract outside tournaments to come in so they help, you know, fill the hotel and the restaurants where they come in and have statewide tournaments. As of right now, we don't have any. And also, we need to help our nonprofit youth groups to do more in establishing these areas of town that have none or very little sport for the kids in the neighborhood. We need to get them off the street, and that's how we need to do it.
Eric or Maria, why don't you go ahead?
I'll just, I'll just go ahead. That's a, thank you for your comment. I mean, I, there's a couple of things that, that we have going forward. But there's a lot more the city needs to do. At a minimum, there are 17 parks and rec facilities that'll be renovated and approved in next year's budget. Secondly, as we roll out the projects that the public approved in the bond program, 30% of our parks are going to see some level of improvement. And we'll also be adding nine new parks. And, and so, you know, I, I know that the, the majority of the projects that'll be worked on in terms of renovations and improvements next year are primarily of our older facilities, our older parks and rec facilities. And so I know we know, I know we need to do more. And, you know, we'll continue to do what we can, what we budget. And, and I appreciate the comment. And I know it's a big priority for the council as well.
And I just wanted to add as well, when you talk about youth, actually, the city is investing $20 million in our youth through the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, to do more programming for our school-age youth and youth perhaps that are not going to school or are not working. So not necessarily facilities that you described, but activities that can keep our, our young members of the population engaged, either our, our park centers with their schools and other activities. So the city council approved today an implementation plan for 10 million of the 20 that I described. And then the additional 10 million will go to council on September 1. So if you're interested in learning more about what activities we're going to be providing for the youth, I will be happy to share that information with you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Eric and Maria, and great question, Hector. We've got lots of questions coming in from Facebook, so I'm going to read one of these now. This one is for Shannon Sims from our Animal Care Services Department. Deanna says, "I'd like to see more funds allocated for free targeted zip codes as well as low-cost spay or neuter surgeries on a sliding scale city-wise to control the ever-increasing stray overpopulation. Residents and rescues have been unable to get appointments for surgeries at the partner clinics, and there is a demand that slots are filled as soon as they open up." Shannon, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. While this isn't something that was directly addressed within the budget for FY23, and the reason it wasn't addressed during FY23's budget is we, as ACS, are currently doing a nationwide sweep to attract vendors to San Antonio. Right now, more money for more spay-neuter would not necessarily result in more spay-neuter. So we are working with outside vendors and even with inside smaller partners to expand their capacity, to expand, obviously, availability to the community, as well as looking at opportunities to bring new vendors into San Antonio to, to help us provide that greater, greater availability of service that we know we need. At the end of the day, we do realize that the, you know, this isn't something that we adopt our way out of, or rescue our way out of, or impound our way out of. We are going to have to increase those, those number of individuals that are coming here to do spay and neuter surgery so that we can get ahead of the ball on that. So that is something that we are actively working, just not specifically with this budget money.
Thank you, Shannon, and thank you, Deanna, for tuning in on Facebook. We appreciate that. Again, if you'd like to ask a question of our panelists, you can press zero on your keypad. You can also leave it in the chat there on Facebook, and we'll read those live on the air, just like the ones you've heard today. Our next question came to us in Spanish, so I'm going to ask Maria to answer this one en español, por favor. This one comes from Gloria, and she says, "I moved to the Hay Street and Green Street area. And when I bought my house, they said that the streets were being repaired, but they still haven't finished any of these repairs in the area. What are these, when are these improvements going to be finished? And will the budget help to accomplish this? There are many neighborhoods that are a mess because of this."
Buenas tardes, Gloria, gracias por esa pregunta. Pues mira, las buenas noticias es que este presupuesto invierte más en los que son calles y banquetas de aquí de nuestra ciudad. Y por la área que describes, parece que estás en el distrito dos. Y el, el distrito dos va a recibir la, una de las más grandes cantidades de dinero en lo que se refiere a calles. Si nos quieres mandar la calle específica de donde estás llamando, nosotros te podemos dar la fecha exacta cuando se van a terminar los arreglos. Y también podemos compartir contigo las otras calles que se van a arreglar, no solamente en el año que entra del 2023, pero tenemos un plan de cinco años que el Departamento de Obras Públicas maneja. Y podemos compartir contigo las calles que están en, en tu distrito o en tu vecindario para que sepas cuáles son y cuándo se van a reparar. Gracias.
Gracias, Maria. Our next question here is from our phone calls. And this one is Anna. Anna, go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. With the budget, is there money in the budget to keep the holding ponds clean? Hello?
Yes, Anna, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Well, what about the budget? Is there money in the budget to hold, holding ponds clean, like the one that is next to our home?
Thank you so much for that question, Anna. I'm going to ask one of our city leaders here to take that call. Perhaps our Solid Waste Director, David Newman, can assist you with that. David, why don't you see if we can help out Anna here on the line?
I'll give it a try. I think she might be referring to detention ponds for drainage ways, which is probably better suited to Public Works. But while I'm talking, we are proposing to add five additional personnel for our hotshot crew so that we can go out and clean up illegal dumps and clean up litter and, and generally clean up the city. And this is in addition to a crew that was added last year, which I'm happy to say that this year we will clean up about 9,000 illegal dumps, about 200 homeless encampments, and about 150 miles of litter along rights of way. And certainly, if stormwater needs us to go help with those detention ponds, we'll do that, too.
See, we all learn something new when we join these telephone town halls. Thank you, David. Robert, why don't you help us out there, sharing from the Public Works perspective?
Sure, yes. I think, so there's several types of ponds out there. There are ponds that are made to hold water for flooding and then release it slowly. There's other ponds out there that are used for water quality, and those tend to get clogged up. So the city does maintain some of those ponds, but there's also a lot of them out there that are private. So I would need to know specifically about which pond she's asking about, and we can follow up and make sure that that pond is cleaned up.
Great. Thank you so much. And again, if you're watching, this is a telephone town hall meeting from the City of San Antonio regarding our proposed budget. Next up on the phone lines, we've got Rosemary. Rosemary, you're live on the line. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My question is this, I'm 72 years old. And is there a program where I can apply? And I'll pay, pay my share, like to replace my windows in my old home for energy-wise and paint. Is there a program or somebody that I can call to assist me on that so I can save on my electricity bill? And thank you.
Thank you so much. What a fantastic question. I'm going to ask Veronica Garcia from our Neighborhood and Housing Services Department to assist you with that.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Rosemary, for that question. This is something that comes up a lot. We do have a program, and it is, we actually have the application period open right now through, for another four weeks. You can apply for our home rehab programs. And it is based on numerous qualifications, that you must be the homeowner, income qualification. So we can look at all of that. And I encourage you, the application is online. And we also have several in-person events where you can come and we can help you with filling it out and scanning all of your paperwork. So if we could get your information, I can make sure that you get that. And through that program, we can help with replacing your windows with energy-efficient windows. We can help with a new roof that is energy-efficient and has a radiant barrier and helps bring down energy costs. So there's lots that we can do. And we can also refer you to CPS Energy that has many weatherization programs as well. Just make sure you know all the resources that are out there, and we can make sure you get that information.
Thank you, Veronica, and thank you, Rosemary. Since you added your question and talked to us live, we've got your information. So we'll make sure to follow up with you and, and connect you with Veronica. Thank you for calling in. Our next question comes to us live on the phone lines from Edwin. Edwin, go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you for taking my call. I'm a 100% service-connected, disabled veteran confined to a wheelchair. And I understand there's been a lot of talk about funds being put into side streets and their sidewalks. But as a person confined to a wheelchair, I can tell you it's not the side streets so much that I am worried about as it is the major streets, as in Banderas. Depending on which way on Banderas you're going, you have sidewalks on one side of the street but not on the other. And if you go the other way, you don't have sidewalks on either side of the street. And going in a wheelchair, like if I wanted to go to Walmart or down to my, to my pet's vet, I would have to literally drive my wheelchair in traffic on the far right lane. So I'm just wondering how much of this budget is going to be put in to making those areas ADA compliant? And when can we expect for that stuff to get done? Because I've been waiting a long time for that.
Edwin, thank you for calling and thank you for your service as well. Robert from Public Works, why don't you help us answer Edwin's question?
Sure. So we do have some sidewalk programs coming up with this budget. We do have in the city over 4,000 miles of sidewalk. And we are putting more funds to complete more. Unfortunately, the corridor that you're talking about on Banderas Road is actually a state-owned facility. So Techstat is responsible for, for that facility. They're sort of outside of our, of our control in that sense. But I do appreciate your concern, and we are always trying to fund additional sidewalks and ramps whenever, whenever we can within the city.
Edwin, thank you so much for calling in. We appreciate you. Our next question here is for our Deputy City Manager, Maria Villa Gomez. And this comes to us from Mike. Mike, go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, I'm interested to know if they're going to be adding any additional EMS units in the city?
Thank you for that question. And we are planning to add an EMS unit in fiscal year 2024. So not next year, but the following year that is in our, in our two-year budget.
Thank you so much, Maria, and thank you, Mike, for that question. I'm going to go to our email as well. For those of you that have submitted questions to essayspeakup@sanantonio.gov, we've got lots of questions in here. So I'm going to go in here and see what we've got. Lots on streets here, and here's one for parks as well. So this says, "How can we create more green spaces and public spaces for all citizens across the city? Investing in local parks helps to keep our community mentally and physically sound." What a great question. And as Maria mentioned earlier, Parks and Recreation was one of the top five priorities shared with us in our community survey. So Homer, why don't you share a little bit about what we are doing for parks in this year's proposed budget?
So the biggest, I guess, contributor to increase green space in the community is through the bond. We know that we are adding nine new properties through the voter-approved bond. And then separate from that, within the same bond, we're also building and adding on to the Howard WP Greenway Trail System, adding 21 miles. So those are two primary ways that we will be investing in increasing our green space in the community. And then last, we also have a garden program. So sometimes we have some neighborhoods that will approach parks and say, hey, we want to participate. So that's another great way to connect to us. And if there's interest in that, please reach out to me, and I'll be happy to follow up.
Awesome. Thank you. Homer, we will send that email over to your, your team, and we appreciate the support for Parks and Rec. The next question here is for our City Manager, Eric Walsh. This one is from the southeast side of San Antonio, and it comes to us from Gloria. Gloria, you're live on the line. Gloria, do we still have you?
Yes, I, I apologize. I was with my elderly mother. I, I apologize. Yes, thank you. I own a small business on the southeast side. And as I was letting you know, that COVID, of course, impacted our business, but so has the construction there that was supposed to be done, I believe, in about a year. But it's going on almost three years. So I was wondering if there was any funding for small businesses such as myself. I'm at a shopping center on the corner of Fair and Goliath Road. So I was just wondering if there was anything in the budget to help small businesses as myself.
So which construction is going on right now?
They're supposed to be putting some sidewalks off of Goliath in between South Cross and Fair Avenue. But apparently, when we asked the construction people, they're going to fix the street, too, as well. But then it was at a halt because apparently the water and the, I think the water and the city had a dispute. I can recall, that's what we were told. So therefore, it was the...
Okay. All right. So to answer your, your immediate question, no, the city does not have, have funds set aside to offset any sort of impacts from street improvements. And that's been an issue that actually came up at the, one of our recent council meetings. We do have small business grants that are available right now. And we're utilizing the federal funds we receive, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, for businesses, small businesses, to apply to help offset any impact they may have seen as a result of COVID. And then lastly, I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not familiar with, with that street project. And, and I will follow up to see what, if there is a delay and what's causing that. And if there's any issue with SARS, I'll work to, to resolve that issue. Thank you for your call.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Gloria, for calling in tonight. Our next call comes to us from Joyce, and this question is for David Newman with Solid Waste. Joyce, go ahead.
Hello, thank you for taking my call. I would like to know, how would I get in touch with someone with solid waste? And I may not be seeing the right organization that would come out and do. I don't know if it's with code compliance. I don't know if it's with code compliance or the city, city waste. I have some things that needs to be removed from my home, and I financially, I'm not able to do it myself. So I made a phone call over a year ago. I have not received any response about it, and I'd like to know who would I get in contact with to help me with this waste that I need to be removed from my home?
Joyce, my name is David Newman. I'm the director of the Solid Waste Management Department. And if you could write my phone number down, please call me, and maybe we can, we'll certainly come out there and talk to you. And perhaps there's something that we can do to help here. My phone number is 207-6441. And if you forget that, call 311 and ask for me. Would that be okay, Joyce?
The number again, I, I've got, write it down, 207-724...
That's my direct line.
441. David?
That's David Newman, yes. Thank you so much, Joyce. And actually, we have your contact info as well, since you asked a question, and we'll be sure to share that with Mr. Newman as well, so we can get connected that way, just in case we missed a digit on that phone number. All right, our next question here comes to us from Catherine in District 2. Catherine, you're live on the air. Go ahead and ask your question.
Good evening, and thank you all for taking my call. And I'm kind of going off script a little bit, but I'm kind of just grumpy about a situation that happened. So I have a granddaughter that left Georgia from a domestic violence situation, and she's here in San Antonio with two small children. And she contacted your, this homeless thing. And someone informed her that the only way she's able to get assistance is she has to be here for nine months. So with all this, this assistance that you all have for homelessness and for rental assistance, does it only apply to people in San Antonio?
Thank you for that question. Melody, I think you're on mute, but if you could help us with that one?
Joyce, this is Melody Woosley. I'm the director of the Department of Human Services, and we have a number of those programs that you're referring to, homeless assistance and also connection to emergency services. If she, if your daughter lives in San Antonio and she's looking for assistance, we, we can help her. There are shelters in our community that won't accept someone without residency for nine months or six months. But there are programs that can help you. And so, like David, you can find me by dialing 311 or my phone number. If you have a pen, I can give that to you right now. And that'll put you straight through to my, my line, and we can connect and, and see how we can help. And again, my name is Melody, M-E-L-O-D-Y, Woosley, W-O-O-S-L-E-Y.
Thank you, Melody. And Catherine, since we again have your contact information, we'll be sure to share that with Melody so we can make sure that connection is made. Our next question came to us from Michelle in Denver Heights. She asked me to read this one on the air, and this one is for Maria. She says she's very concerned about the burnt homes that have been in the area and what can be done about it. She's asking what the city can do and whether those might be demolished for safety.
I'm going to pass that over to Mike Shannon with Code Enforcement. I think he'll be prepared to answer that question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Again, I'm Mike Shannon. I'm with the city's Development Services and Code Enforcement Department. And, and certainly regarding any of the, any homes that are destroyed by fire, we, we actually get called out after the fire department is done putting out the fires, and we make an initial assessment. Some of them are emergency demos or demolitions. They, they have to, they're so bad that the owner or the city will have to demolish those within just a few days. If it's not in that situation, although maybe a vacant structure, it could still be deemed a public nuisance and dangerous. It would just go through a, a public process through the Building Standards Board. We have actually several of them going through that process right now. Those can take a few months to get on the board. We ensure that the property is secured, barricaded up a little bit so that people don't get in and around it, but those are critical. And we're certainly aware of that. We're working with the fire department very closely on that, not only in District 2, but in other, other areas where there's some fires. So if there's a certain property, I know of a few in Denver Heights, we're probably thinking of the same ones, but if you have a few others, you can certainly reach out to me through this, or I can reach out to you. I think we have your, your contact information. If you call it in or email it in, I can get that and reach out to you in the morning.
We certainly will share that with you, Mike. Thank you so much, and thank you for that question, Michelle. We've got a caller on the line. This is Jose. Jose, do we still have you on the phone?
Yes, I am here.
Go ahead, Jose.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to commend and say thank you to everyone that's on this panel who work tirelessly to serve our city and the citizens therein. Not enough is said and not enough thanks are given to everyone who works, whether they're on this panel or all those who work underneath them. I'd like to put forward an idea of a moratorium on certain programs and pay of executives in terms of helping some of those who are our first-line workers, like those who, you know, use picks and shovels, who do all the grunt work. And making sure that their pay is keeping up in pace with the executives. Also suggests that a moratorium be put on expanding expenditures on tourism, big-ticket items that aren't necessarily a must, and turn those to programs that help promote, if not enhance, and build up families here in San Antonio, especially on the sides of town or in the parts of town that are experiencing high crime rates, and helping those families build up their values and helping them support their children. And also maybe divert some of those, some of those millions of, of dollars towards education, towards specifically teachers, in reducing the classroom size and giving them the increase in pay that they deserve. Deliberately making programs that help families and helping them raise their children, not replacing them, but helping them in that regard. Again, thank you to all those who serve the city, and thank you to all those who give tirelessly of their time and energy in serving the city.
Jose, thank you so much for that question. I'm going to ask our city manager to weigh in on that.
Yeah, Jose, I, I can't agree with you anymore than, than that excellent point you're making about the, the employees. And I, I mentioned that at the beginning of the program. We, I've been with the city for 28 years, and, and in the proposed budget probably has, or I shouldn't say probably, it definitely has more funding to increase the pay of, of, of our civilian employees, because we are competing with every other employer and making sure that, that we are competitive in the market. And, and the majority of that money is going to those 7,400 civilian employees, whether they work at the 911 Center, or the airport, or Solid Waste, or Public Works, or Parks, or the library. We've got to keep those positions filled, because we're not the private sector. We, we, we can't afford to not open up a, a library or to cut back on solid waste routes. We've got to keep those positions filled. We've got to be competitive, because the public expects that service to continue. So I thank you for your suggestion about making sure that we are focused on those employees that are doing the work.
Thank you so much, Eric, and thank you, Jose, and all of our callers and viewers who have tuned into tonight's telephone town hall. If you want to catch us again, we've got another telephone town hall meeting coming up on Monday. If you know of a neighbor or family member or friend who wants to learn a little bit more about the proposed budget, ask them to visit essayspeakup.com or call 311 for a complete list of upcoming events. If you'd like to learn more about the city's budget, you can visit, visit sanantonio.gov/budget. Signing off for the City of San Antonio, thank you so much for tuning in.
Hello, and welcome to the Global Arts in San Antonio Spotlight on Sister and Partner Cities.